Good evening, I will call the meeting to order for the special meeting on this January, January the 10th, thank you Dave, 2014 at 6:06 PM. First order of business, we have a change to the agenda, we have to re swear in Commissioner Dave Walton. So, that being said, Dave, if you would, I, Dave Walton, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the office of Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, Commissioner, position four. According to the law and to the best of my ability. Congratulations again. Thank you. We found out through another commissioner that we had to redo that again because Dave was serving a short followed by a long term, so we wanted to make sure we did that correctly. Short and full term, thank you.
It is a long term.
It is, it is a long term. We're here tonight to talk about the search for the new director. I hope everybody got most of the last minute stuff we all sent out. I have still not received anything from Port Angeles, which is too bad because the guy I talked to the other day was really enthusiastic, but he sounded also very harried and busy. So, I did get out Anacortes stuff, I know Dave got us stuff from the city of, and Bellingham, thank you sir. And I believe we got most of that to you, unfortunately not on the timeline manner?
I just got the job description from Anacortes, it hasn't worked today, you're asked.
Yes. The pitiful ad thing I wrote today at the last minute, so, where should we start? Kirk had contacted me earlier about a suggestion that he had, I'll let him go ahead and bring up.
Okay. Well, first of all, like you all, I've been scrambling this last day, today, trying to put some things together and find some information for possible options in our pursuit of a new director. And I went to the association, one of my responsibilities was to go to the Association of Washington Cities and see what it would cost to advertise with them, and also just see what they currently had out there. So, I went there and I looked under their parks and recreation area, and they had one listing for City of Des Moines, and under that listing, I got on the back, they had the, they had the job description, they had, their, it was for a district manager, it's a metropolitan park, part-time, two, three days a week, as a contract employee, they'll maintain and operate the Mount Rainier Pool, reporting to the Board of Commissioners, and this is the district manager position, they provide administrative support to the board, and plans, directs, manages, oversees the operations of the district. I'm not sure if this is an interim position, I think it may be, but they did place it, and when I looked at the bottom, the name of the contact was Proffman, and Proffman is a executive search company, so it's basically a headhunter. So, I thought, well, I'll go check them out, and I went to their site, they placed and they filled the City of Vancouver's Parks and Rec District Director recently, and showed who they placed in that position, several other positions they filled on their site, and the person, I did contact them, and the person I talked to was a former Parks and Recreation District Director himself, and yet there's also another director that works for them, who was formerly with the City of Kirkland, I believe with the City of Kirkland, he told me. So, I just wanted to, the nice thing about it is they're doing the work for us, and I just, I took some notes down, we would have to do an RFP with them, and I think we would want to look at our policy, you know, resolutions to make sure that we're in line, and probably have to do a couple other RFPs with other search companies or executive search companies, just to make sure we, you know, have a selection and make a decision based on what they can do for us and cost. Our policy and procedure manual says that we should have an HR person, that person employed by the district, and I don't think we ever have, and I do not feel qualified to be really, I mean, I can interview, but I'm not trained in that profession, although we would have the final say. But anyway, I did take some notes, he said, they recommend the full search program, and that would cover at least the northwest part of the nation, and would likely go national because people are looking for that kind of work, they would advertise with the National Parks and Recreation Association as well. They have, I found them on this site with the Association of Washington Cities, they advertise in several other areas. They, once they get the job description out there, they do all the initial screening, either in person, by Skype, or phone, they do all the background checks, including education and work experience, so we wouldn't be responsible for any of that. After the initial screening, they forward onto us a list of their top 10 recommendations for us to review, they will then continue to do a secondary interview based on those we select, and they'll process to get the candidates down to the top two or three, and then they'll pass those onto us for a final choice and review. They'll help us in salary negotiation, and making sure our contract and salary is written correctly, and that's just part of what they said they'll do for us. They estimated placement to be from three to four months for a full-time director, but they can get us an interim director very quickly, and possibly set as early as February 1st. So, on the surface, I thought it sounded pretty good, it takes the work off of us, takes a lot of it from us. The interim director position's likely around $50 an hour, and we'd have to look at that as far as budget considerations, and how long they would be with us, how many hours a week we would need them, what their experience is. The estimated cost for the executive search for the fee would be anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000. So, I thought that's, you know, considering we do not pay an HR person, and we are saving some money this year on our director's position, and that they're set up to do this kind of work, they have the experience, they have the people in place, they, and I don't know other people's opinions of headhunters, but he sounded really good on the phone, of course he's a salesman, but again, I, I don't have the time really to do this kind of work, and I really don't want the responsibility of narrowing the field down and trying to do the background checks personally, and I just don't think I would do, you know, as good a job as these guys could do. So, I just want to put that out there for us to consider as a board. Again, I think we should get at least three of these proposals from these headhunters if we're going to go this direction, or explore this direction. I mean, the proposals are free, and they'll tell us in black and white everything they'll do for us. And we'll spend a little extra, but we may save ourselves a lot because just the area that they can cover, they're set up, they have the experience in this area, and I don't know, it sounded really good to me, so, I'm just going to put that out there.
Paul Fernsdorf, and I don't know if you're familiar with him, he did talk to me briefly about, he used to own and operate like a search company for employees in Plymouth too, and he said that if you're interested and if you want to go down that avenue, he would be willing to help at the lower costs. So, that might be something to talk to him.
Lower costs would be great. And when Kirk originally talked to me about this, I was excited, and I had to drive back from Mount Vernon by myself, just me and the dog, and the biggest thing, and I'm writing it down here, we're looking at $12,000 to $15,000 plus $4,000 per month, and a three to four, three to five, you know, three to five month, that's another 12, so we're looking at $24,000 that we don't have in the budget, and that's the biggest thing I'm thinking about right now.
I don't know if the interim position would be full-time though, I mean, I think we could probably narrow it down to more of a part-time thing.
Okay.
So, we may be able to save some there.
All right. Yes ma'am?
If somebody is brought in from outer area, we have walking location expenses too, of household, children, schools, or that, because if somebody can be brought in locally, some, that would be on the budget, if it's a black person.
Right. Did you want to say something Carolyn?
I think search firms can be excellent, Proffman, and Proffman, I would say Waldron is another public sector one, that Care is Consulting is another one that does just public sector work. You do have significant costs associated with it, which is, you know, a board decision. Also, you would have to, and I'm sure that Proffman's on there, you would, there's a list available that shows like the third parties or whatever vendors, if you will, that provide services under the umbrella of the State of Washington that you can find if you, because you need to make sure that your obligation to have their proposals from a variety of parties. You know, you potentially would have a guarantee, it's, you know, all the board is, I actually, I'm not going to stick around too long, because I just don't really feel like it.
Me either.
Honestly, honestly, I'm not, I'm not elected.
No, 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 we appreciate all you've done so far, thank you.
I've spent a lot of time of my own time on this, you guys, and I want you to succeed. I will tell you that as a board, this is the most important decision that you'll make this year, and I believe the future of NWPRD rests on this decision. So, I wrote you a draft job description, which I didn't finish, I don't have a lot of copies. So, basically what I tried to do is, is all right, I'll hand it back to you, so, really trying to scope the role, overview, you know, what are the key functions of the director, I liked, you know, the island, that Anacortes job description had a couple good nuggets, but needed a lot of rewriting. Really trying to focus on, you know, some of the things you said last time around public agency experience, doesn't necessarily, you know, the bachelor's degree would be above the plus, but it's more required, which is what you said last time, and then really focusing on, you know, what are the key responsibilities of this position? Looking at some of the needs that are the greatest for the district in terms of having a person in this role who's going to provide to you all the knowledge, the reporting, the management, the day-to-day planning and forecasting, and would really report out to the board. I focus specifically on managing the programs and services, and certainly there might be other people who report to this person who have direct oversight, but it is the responsibility of the director to, for the scope of those services. Looking at those financial statements, you know, holding, being accountable for budget variances, that's what being a director is, is that that sits in that person's lap to explain to you why, and there may be a great reason why, but there are, you know, supervising the maintenance of this facility, looking at the safety and health, which is so important to the patrons. Really working with the staff and providing leadership to them, you know, the state of rest of all the changes in like, you know, the Portable Care Act, we talked about this last time, having somebody who's going to bring you recommendations in the fall and say, okay, here's what we're looking at for 2015, or so on. Being, you know, updating those employment policies annually, your employee handbook should be updated annually because stuff just changes and it needs, it needs that. And then I, the marketing plan for the park district, you know, building those community partnerships, that really lives with this role. I didn't get it finished, but, you know, I think there's probably more than a year ago, talking about that, you know, the naval station, that's a big partner for us, and we want to serve their needs, and we want them to also, you know, be a good voice for us in the community. And then there's probably like driver's license, CPR, maybe certification. So, it's a.
What is BLC?
The Board of Commissioners. That's hard to say. Probably something a little different, something better way like that.
It doesn't happen the same as like.
But at any rate, if you decided to, you know, go with a Proffman or a Waldron or one of those public agencies, this would give them a place you could give this to them. If you decided to post it yourself, you probably could pull some of these pieces and then use that to help your advertising or to be able to.
Yeah, this is for now, thank you all, this is awesome.
Carolyn, I might contact you just to maybe get some of those names, and, you know, we can get more than three RFPs.
Because that would probably, I think the cost will be relatively the same, and.
Well, and they said it's negotiable, and this is for a full search, which is the full meal deal. Basically, they do other things that are less, more restricted areas, but that's all in the black and the fine, you know, not necessarily the fine print, but that's all what they would put in proposal, and that would give us a negotiation room too.
They would, I mean, you could narrow it and say, you know, we just want, because the reality is, is that, you know, the job salary is, you know, is like 30, high 30s to high 40s, or somewhere around, I don't remember.
It's in the 50s.
50s or so.
Well, it works.
You're going to be, just to be very candid, hard pressed to honk somebody from their life in the Midwest or the East Coast and bring family and children out here for that money. So, you're, you know, we're probably looking.
More Washington, Oregon, Idaho area.
Exactly, so, you know, but they will know that, but you, and, you know, I think Kirk, you made a great point, it is, it is a huge time commitment, and either you all can make that time commitment, you know, in all your various roles, you all obviously can't do it all together, but you either can all do it as a group and do it effectively, or if the commitment isn't there for other reasons, then it's not going to, it's not going to succeed.
And for me, it's not. Not with my current job.
I personally think we have to commit the time, I mean, $24,000 if people are never, I don't think the public is going to buy into that at all, I mean, especially when you look at the budget, as tight as it is this year, I don't see how we can, with any good conscience go down that road.
Well, I disagree.
And I think we have to commit the time, we've been elected to do that, I don't think we have a choice, and if we can't do it, then we need to step aside, and that's my opinion for what it's worth. We've got people in this pool right now, somebody in Erica who's just 30-some years' experience, probably in the pool, you know, we ought to rely on some of them for some expertise, bring her and Bill into this process of narrowing it down, you know, let's rely on the people we have, I mean, yeah, this is my opinion.
This is really a fundamental issue. What you're suggesting is a professional search for a professional. The other side is to have a community-sensitive individual that has the understanding of public management and can run a recreation district which is not a huge operation, and so it's more on the amateur, non-professional side, and I think we have to choose, and I agree with Steve. I tend to know how to fix taps, and I know how to fix problems in the house because it saves me a little bit of money, and I'm really reluctant to spend $24,000 to go the professional route for an operation which has half the salary of the Bellingham guy, you know, at max. We're not, we're not aiming at the top of the market, we're aiming somewhere in the middle or below the middle in that, in that position. And I think a really good general manager, as it understands the community, would be a real asset for us, you know, without any pretensions of being Seattle North or anything else. But that's just where I am sort of in this struggle, I think this is a really important thing.
Well, and I think $24,000 is definitely on the high end of anything, it'd probably be more like half of that.
Well, unless we talk about all the ancillary costs of moving.
I think that's going to be on, we're not going to pay for that, if they want to move out here, they move out here, you know, why would we pay for their travel?
They'll bounce a job and have them use themselves.
Well.
When you get to another patron for a jump, their jump pays to the move.
I'm just saying, my biggest thing is, they do the screening, they do the background checks, they're professional interviewers, they can make good recommendations to us as to who would be the best fit for our community, they would help us further with our job descriptions, I mean, and we would have at least three of these folks to select from, and that would help us negotiate even further on a price. We don't pay an HR person, we have in our policy manual that we're supposed to have an HR person for this type of work.
We don't have it on the list of employees, so take a look at the.
We've saved a lot of money over the years on.
No, no, but I mean, you're getting, when they said what the district was to have in the way of employees, somebody in Bill dug up once, we had that sheet with all of the job people that were employed, and there was no human resources person on that list.
It does refer to one. Thank you.
Some more inconsistencies.
I know.
I agree with, with Ms. Payton, this is the, this will be the defining decision that this board makes in 2014, and everything, me and the future, the future of the district rests upon what we do today, well, not, I'm afraid not, not what we do today, but the direction we decide to go in ultimately, we put into that position. I think that with the budget as tight as it is, and knowing that we already have to make amendments to the budget, I don't see where there's wiggle in there to pay for a professional headhunter. I think the idea would be fantastic, the idea would be nice, but I think that, you know, we have resources available to us, whether it be staff, whether it be us or volunteers who can perform that, it might not be as smooth, and it might not be as quick, but I think that the type of candidate we're looking for can be found without, without that kind of expenditure. You know, I appreciate the work that Ms. Payton has put in, invaluable, thank you so very much. And I think that all of us, even in our busy schedules, can squeeze a little bit of time here and there to make it happen. If I need to put together an RFP to send us some select, well, no, I'm backtracking, I think that what we need to do is, is solidify a process that we're going to move forward with, and a, identify a target area of marketing, and who would be willing to manage that and move in that direction.
All right. First off, I want to thank Ms. Carolyn Payton for all her work, again, I know, you probably hear it ad nauseam from us, but it is, as everybody's up here said, really, truly invaluable. If you could, perchance, maybe send this electronically, and we can make some additions that maybe, if you would edit in your spare time, which I know is quite, you know, costly, that would be fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't want to keep you any further tonight. Can we talk about it real quick? I would love to hear you tear it apart.
I would tear it apart, I, I think if maybe you massage the, pull any of the key points out of the job description that you like, that, I think it's just like some work sort of thing, perhaps. I was curious about the bonds, I.
No, I didn't put anything in there, I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, like it says under the required experience and research and maintaining bonds.
That was something I threw in there. And the reason I threw that in there is because both Anacortes and Port, you know, I didn't know about Bellingham, but I knew Port Angeles, they both just went after and got bonds to build fitness rooms, so it's a whole separate room for fitness, like cardio equipment, free weights, that type of stuff, next to the facility, and they got it with bonds. And I was like, really? Marilyn Stratford, is it?
Stadler.
Stadler, thank you very much, from Anacortes was, oh my gosh, the woman was just, I can't say enough about how helpful she was, and she told me all about the bond that they had gotten, and how they had done that, and then Steve, and I apologize for not knowing his name, last name, Steve, the executive director for the Port Angeles pool, said, yeah, we just did the same thing. And I was like, you kidding me? And he goes, no, and I said, wow, that would be great, we should have somebody in here that understands bonds too, so I threw that in there, I don't know if that's something that's typically thrown in there or not.
See, I don't know if there's like a bright line, which only, and I, somebody would have to research this, like in your role, if you're employed, like, for example, when I was employed at the hospital, we couldn't, as an employee, I couldn't on my employee time go out and try and support the bond to be voted, does that make sense? But I could do it as a private citizen. So, I don't know if there's a bright line for that in a special purpose district here.
So, maybe.
But, so that, I just wasn't, wasn't sure about that.
Yeah, there is, I don't know, it's a level where a person that's working here can't can't.
But they can, they can research it and put it together, but.
Not on the time clock.
Oh, so you can't even do that on your time clock?
This is where, this is where you get, this is your capital development plan, you've got to work on a capital development long-term plan, but then you have to bring in people that are going to check out how the financing will work in the long-term.
Okay, taking that one out? It is gone, thank you very much. Look at that.
The power go to your head.
The delete button? Oh, I'm good with the delete button.
It's the rest of them that are forward?
That's, yeah, it's everything in between.
I think that would be my only suggestion, maybe, maybe see if some of these parts.
Take some of this, and move it in there?
Push it in there, and I tried to carefully, you know, looking at that public agency leadership as opposed to specifically, you know, I have no idea what the market is, you know, I don't know if there's, you know, like 10 people who are working or just waiting for this position to get posted, you know, or if it's going to be tough, because I don't know, and I will be candid to you all, is, you know, the history of the last year and a half, particularly for somebody who's going to be coming in the community, what I would do is I'd do, I'd read all the newspaper articles, and some, you know, and that's going to be, so you'll, you'll all have to be prepared to answer that, if, you know, how long you want to, how you want to answer that, in an honest way, but appropriately, so somebody can make this decision with them in a honest.
I think it would need to be part of the final interviews too, just to make them know, hey, this is what we expect from you, this is what you're walking into, so it's only fair if we want to get somebody like we're all talking about. into, so it's only fair if we wanna get somebody like we're all talking about.
If you want to be a successful fit, these are two ways to...
Right. Yes. Thank you.
So I think this, yeah, I think I would just say maybe you see, pull some of this up and combine.
Okay. Any, what about that bottom blurb on the area? I'm not a sunshine and poodles type of writer, so, uh...
Did you see the...
Uh, I think Bill was making somewhere around 54. I think he was in the middle of the range, I believe, wasn't he?
I believe he was.
And so I think that it's, I mean, yeah, he was not at the high end, but definitely not at the low.
Okay, come on.
I wanna think it was 54. The salary, I think with that, there were medical... He had at the time a retirement package.
And so the new director will be offered something the same?
That's all negotiable, right?
Yes.
I think Craig was 38, or 40, yeah, 48, uh, at one point, and worked through to the 50 level. And I think Bill, whatever it was going on then, loved it higher than that. Just in that range. Am I wrong? Also, uh...
Yes, by the way...
Real quick, by the way, you asked me to look up the LinkedIn. So I wrote LinkedIn, a letter, and asked them how much it would cost. Asked them, said, could you please tell me how much it would cost to post the position for 30 days for a new director of a tax supporter park and recreation district in Nook Harbor, Washington? Also, could you tell me how much information can be posted? Anyway, they wrote back and they said, thank you for your email, and I apologize for the delayed response. The best way to find out how much a job post will be is to start to create a post and go directly to the bottom of the post, put in locations and code, it will generate the price without you having to check out. In this case, the price would be about $295. So this is what they said. When it comes to the information that can be included in the job posting, as long as it does not go over the character limits for the given bill, you can include as much information as needed. But then I went to their website, which that's kinda confusing, and it said $195. So I don't...
$195 to $295.
Yeah, they said $295, but the website she sent me to said $195.
Can we do hyperlinks?
Why not?
Because I, you know, because what would save us on words would be able to hyperlink the PD, put a hyperlink to the PD, because every point I saw, they all had a hyperlink to the website, and even if it's just the pool website, and we have a flashy thing on the front, you know, for the director's position with the PD and everything else, and then they can look at the website and see what the pool's about and everything.
It did look like they gave you adequate space.
Okay.
And what they've got under, what they've got is, uh, work environment, company, company description, and then it goes into position, job title, experience, job function, employment type, job description, desire, skills and expertise. And the blocks were, I mean, it looked like they allowed quite a few characters. I mean, it's not too much of a space up there.
So we got $195 to $295 to LinkedIn, which looks like it's about the going cost from the nod I got from somebody.
And that was for 30 days.
For 30 days. All right. Washington Recreation and Park Association, which we are not a member of, um, will run our ad for $50 for the duration. No, we are not. So, they may have you, but unfortunately, the district is...
The commissioner, but this is district...
Yeah, wait, we're no longer members. Yes, sir. Now, this is Washington Recreation and Park Association. WRPA.
RPA.
Yes. I don't know if there's a difference between RP and PR, except obviously the alphabetical difference there. But it's $50 to advertise with them as a non-member, and the position, location, organization and website all go on, which we could add the hyperlink to. So there's $50 there. Dave, you sent out something? What do you got?
Well, I, in the materials I got from Casey Luxter, who was very helpful from the city of Willingham, she sent a list of, of people that they had advertised their last, um, parks director position with, and they had WRPA, she didn't list the price and she was unsure, but they also had the National Recreational Park, um, Association, which was 230 days. They had also listed with the recreational park associations in Colorado, California, Florida and Texas. I do not know the...
Why those states?
Well, I don't know specifically why those states, and I don't know specifically what kind of, of candidates were generated from those states, or the quantity of candidates that were generated from those states. They had also, um, put it on Career Builder, which they did through the Willingham Herald, and the Association of Washington Cities, they have advertised for free, but they're members of the AWC.
And we're not. So does, anybody know how much AWC costs if we're not members?
Well, if I'm still logged into the internet, I can tell you.
All right.
But it keeps dropping me.
Hey, Dave, you gotta look at your daughter over there in the back row, brother. She's joining in on the... Her and Michelle are in there over there in the corner. That's awesome, man. Joining in on the, the water aerobics class.
I think it's great.
It's awesome.
Fantastic. Nicole, perhaps you can help me? There's the, there's the public wifi, and then there's the secure wifi. I keep getting dropped from the public. Can you sign me into the secure?
I don't, we don't have a password.
You don't? What's the purpose of having it? You don't know the password?
That's a good question. All right. All right, so looking at everything else, and they keep things to a minimum tonight. What I did find out from Marilyn over at Anacortes is their final search group used, um, for the interviews, used the entire board and all their senior staff. And she says it was very intimidating to come into a room with, I think she said 11 people. However, she said it was also a very positive experience because she got such diverse questions from both, and she totally understood it. You know, the board is asking very board-specific questions, the senior staff was asking program-specific questions that the board would not normally have the knowledge of. And she found that as she went through the process, she goes, that was a brilliant idea. She says, you know, um, because I told her we were gonna have a member of the public, could have a member of the public, and she goes, you know what? After having participated in that process, she goes, if, if I can make one suggestion to you all, it would be to have your board and all your senior staff on the interview. And I was like, okay. And she said it builds trust. They get to ask the questions that they wanna hear answered, um, because they're gonna have specific questions that we probably won't think of, and it would give us the chance to, as the elected officials, to ask the questions that we are concerned with. Yes, sir.
Really good idea. Now, that's gonna be a lot of energy out for the person coming in. Is there any way of staging it so that we can get that, I mean, the questions, so they're tiring the person completely? How is it getting an environment where you can maybe stage it or have different things happening and, you know, come back to it so that, so that we're metering it out? I mean, a person will be pretty ground down if they're dealing with 10 or 11 people asking different questions for three hours.
Well, yeah, I would, I would say we'd have to limit the time amount because I, I know, yes, ma'am.
Come on, I understood from the interview process in Anacortes, I'd worked over there for a while, is not all the senior staff asked questions. All the senior staff were there to hear the answers to the question, and they had elected one or two spokespersons to do the actual talking. But they were on board at that point to, to hear the answers to the questions, and then at any point when they felt like there needed to be some clarification, they would at that point maybe ask for that clarification. However, the majority of the senior staff sat back, listened, took notes, because they wanted to be able to look through those notes as the team with the commission board later on to make that decision to narrow them down. But I think they had one or two people that actually did the asking, so they weren't getting it from the...
And according to the RCWs, we can go into executive session, all five of us at the same place at the same time, to interview, uh, the, uh, an applicant, and then to discuss their qualifications. The one things we couldn't do was even informally at that time say, wow, I really like that person, that should be the one we'd hire. We'd have to stop, the five of us would have to stop short of that, you know, since all five of us are together. But we can interview, talk about the qualifications, but we can't, yes, sir.
I have no problem with what you're saying, but the thing is, if we're talking about executive session, the five of us and the senior staff, that's not executive session.
I believe you can invite into executive session, remember, you...
So you're inviting them in and that's...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, procedurally, procedurally, we'd have to invite them in, right? And the, and the interviewee in. But you can do that in executive session, yes, sir.
That's fine, sounds great. We can stick handles through that. I still find a person sitting taking notes and looking at me if I'm being interviewed for three hours or two hours just about as intimidating as the person that asks the questions, in fact, maybe more so because I don't know what they're thinking.
I, I can tell you, I can tell you this much, I'm very familiar with the process that takes, um, two days, which is an assessment center, um, which ends with stump, what we, gosh, I don't wanna say this on public record, uh, with, with the process ending with stump the chump, which is generally a couple of chief officers and a couple captains, company officers asking the candidate a bunch of questions with an HR rep in the room, so that we can ask the same questions the same way to everybody. Um, after which, that two-day process is over, and the two final candidates go to a final interview with just the fire chief and the HR rep. So to me, two to three hours, that's a walk in the park. But we've got, we've got people at both ends of the spectrum here, so we'd have to decide if that's something we wanna do or not.
Sounds pretty good for what you're, what you're thinking, what you're putting together right now.
Carolyn, any last thoughts before you jettison?
I think I would just, you know, I've done a paramount of both interviewing and being interviewed in my life, and been, you know, done a lot of panel interviews, and, and I've done interviewing with the EMS guys at the hospital, so I'm familiar with some of the, some of the interesting scenarios and questions, hold on to your seat, kind of things. But there is some value in making the candidate comfortable, um, and that, and perhaps that can be achieved with 10 people. I, I've never been interviewed by, I've been interviewed at a whole day interview, where you do various panels, you do one-on-ones, you have lunch, which is a waste of time because you can't share your food. But, um, but not the whole, the whole thing altogether. So I don't know, I think it would have to be really well managed, uh, so that person felt comfortable, felt like, because they wanna do their vows, this is their only shot, and they, they, just because there's everybody staring at them and writing notes, they don't wanna, you know, be like, you know, irritating or rushed, so I think it would take some skill to make them comfortable.
Thank you, once again, thank you.
You guys have a great weekend.
You too, having an awesome weekend, thank you for all that.
Fill that job description on Monday.
Thank you.
And we'll see us from tomorrow.
I'll see you, I think, is it your little one?
I got three of them.
Okay. I'll be there in the afternoon.
Bye-bye, have a good weekend. So what we have to decide this evening is a way forward. Is a way forward how we're gonna proceed from here. Um, we have, um, a good footprint, which, uh, you know, we'll send to Carolyn, I'll actually make some changes to this this weekend, and send it to her on Monday before she gets this to me. And what I'll probably do is not only send her this, but I will send her, um, her, hand all of us, this with the, still the ad stuff filled in. So if anything you want to do to wordsmith that, bring it with you next Thursday or send it back to me individually, not to the group, please. That way it's not a group conversation. Okay? Um, so I will have both of these back out to everybody on Sunday evening. And then, um, we need to decide what to do before, I'd like to decide tonight the way forward, definitive path forward. Um, I know, I can volunteer to put some time in.
Tom's available.
You're available, Steve's available, so what I need then is I need two volunteers for, what I'd like to do is put a subcommittee together to put this together, to start the interview process, to put, uh, with the help of the senior staff, to put out, uh, once we, I guess I should stop, stubborn, stammering. I'll get this to Carolyn Monday, we'll have the final approval at our meeting next Thursday of the PD and of the, uh, job announcement. We will then fly that on Friday after the Thursday meeting, with agreed-upon sources tonight, and the subcommittee will handle, um, collecting resumes, and, um, then the initial interview with volunteers from the senior staff. Now, unfortunately, I know our, um, our wonderful lady here in the front row is going back to Australia to visit her family, darn her. And I know it's well overdue, when are you leaving?
I'm leaving February 13th, and I'll be back April 1st.
Okay.
So if I still participate, I'd be very happy to.
I believe you'd probably be able to help with some of the initial stuff that comes in.
I'm very interested and involved and care tremendously about you.
So if we fly it on the 16th, or, excuse me, the 17th, just then?
I'm leaving, you know, I'm leaving the 13th.
13th of February?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a month.
So if we fly it on the 17th, we have 30 days. So do we wanna fly it on a Friday, or do we wanna fly it on a Monday?
I don't think it matters as long as we get it.
You don't think it matters?
Just do it the 17th.
We'll go the 17th, so a month would be one, two, three. So to the seventh, 17th to February, the seventh. We'll, we will fly...
That's three.
Is it three?
That's three.
No? One, two, three, four. 17th, one, two, three, darn it, Alan's right again. February the 14th, thank you, Alan. So we'll fly it till Valentine's Day. All right? Because we wanna get a sweetheart of a deal here. Um, gosh, I'm selling used cars here. Um, so we're gonna fly it till, from the January 17th to February the 14th, after which we have, you leave what day? The 13th? So should we give a week to review, um, resumes? Is that gonna be enough?
They're thinking about reviewing resumes, by just taking a look at the pile and deciding who we want to...
Yes.
Well, it depends on size of the pile, could we just say we'll review the resume?
So we will review the resumes the week of the 20th, which is good, because we have our regular scheduled meeting that night, so we can review them at home, and then bring them in, and we can make a decision on the 20th, which would be an open public meeting. That would be perfect. That would be perfect. So February the 20th, we will, uh, vote to narrow field.
So you'll, we'll have reviewed the resumes that have come in prior to the meeting, and then at the meeting, we'll vote to narrow down to how many?
Depending on the resumes, we'll pick an appropriate number. Because I think Alan brings a good point. We, I'd hate to say we'll narrow it down to three, and we may have...
It'd be three.
It may only be three, or we may have five or six candidates that we all go, wow.
Can I ask another picky point?
Yes, sir.
If you're voting on the 13th, is it legal for, for us to have a preliminary glance at the ones that we're appealing for the people, and then we'll do our call the next week?
Oh, I definitely think so.
We can open the pot up, and you can take a look at them before you go?
Yes.
And just leave a comment?
And get her feedback?
That would be appreciated.
And then we'll need, what I'd like to do is also have, uh, a couple of senior staff members, get their feedback from them also, which we can get on the evening of the 20th. So if we had any volunteers from the senior staff that might be sitting in the room this evening.
What I remember from the other day, they actually, as a team, had decided that Eric...
What I remember from the other day, they actually, as a team, had decided that Erica and Bill, if I was to this right, would be the two to represent.
So Erica and Bill?
Am I right on that?
Yeah.
And Bill, senior staff?
Yes. They would all be part of a, a different part of the process, but if we need representatives of the senior staff, it would be Erica and Coach Bill.
Okay.
And that's what they would like, as a team.
But I wouldn't be timed, but Nicole, Nicole's going to have to put up with this person more than she's closer than anybody else.
Well, part of, part of this thought also goes past that, and the fact that they are both salary employees as well. So, for us to ask them to look at this stuff on the weekend, it is, that's part of the part of that.
Thank you for giving up some of your time. Once again, thank you.
It's important that you acknowledge your chair of directors.
And on behalf of them, I would just like, because I met with them for an hour this week, I would just like to say thank you to all the other board members for being willing to allow them to be part of this process. Thought Erica brought up a very interesting point to the name, that was, you know, for somebody who supports and strengthens their team, an amazing team really, I mean, a lot of talent, a lot of experience, and for somebody to come in that can, can support them, but also strengthen them, and make them even better than they are, I think that's what they all want, right? And on behalf of them, just thank you for being willing to allow them to be part of the process.
Steve? First interview after we narrow it down on the 20th, is it week enough notice do we think to give somebody before, prior to an interview? I mean, most people are waiting anxiously to hear. I think a week is adequate, so if we made notifications on the 21st, and then met with every, met with the first group, I am so sorry to be that guy. Wow. No, it was me. I will take, I will take that one on the chin. So the 28th, Friday, February the 28th, will that work to do the first interview?
You want to do it on a Friday?
Your what?
Would rather do it on a Saturday.
Well, the first interview, and here's a question we need to ask, do we want the first interview to be all of us, or do we want it to be a subcommittee and the senior staff for the first interview, to narrow it down to the final two?
That'd be a bit unworthy for me, the last of February and first of March.
Okay. What do you think?
I actually like that idea.
Okay. So, February 28th, first?
I think H groups is that weekend, but.
I thought it was, wait a minute, AGS is unfortunately, is it that weekend? That's what I have, I thought it was in March. Well, the 28th, first, first and second. Why don't I see it on here?
We can make it ten and a day, and then.
No, H groups, H groups, AGS is March 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
Because then we might have a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
You can say that you will, will start the interviews within a week's time of, you know, seven shortness, period.
You got the same weekend deck?
Or, you know, within two weeks.
Yeah.
That way you're giving yourself, you know, shots.
What's that?
What about within two weeks of that 20th?
Okay, so first interview within two weeks.
That's right, and just leave it at that, because we don't know what, we're starting to fine-tune something that we can't get off.
Very good, very good. And then we will have the finals after that.
Yes.
Okay, and then finals, final by all after that.
I got distracted by some meetings.
No, sir.
When were we doing the interviews?
We will do, and the suggestion was brought up, to have the interviews within two weeks of the 20th, to make sure everybody's schedules will match, to include the candidates, because we don't know what the candidates are going to be available for. So, and then we will do the final interview will be with senior staff and the board after we've narrowed the field to two.
And that's an open meeting?
And, no, that'll be an executive session. Yes, we'll have to go to executive, a decision, the final decision will always have to be made in open meeting. And so we'll have to call a special meeting for that.
Your executive session, you have to escort the invited senior staff.
That's correct, sir. All right.
So this news, this, this just told me, I said, why couldn't, how do we, pardon me?
No.
Why do we not have a silver sneakers designation? So I've, I've never got silver sneakers recently, and it's fabulous, it's a program offered by some insurance companies for seniors, where, and cordless cord has it, or that's perhaps why the cordless cord is so, for, for retired. The companies, the, the insurance companies that pay for the program, pay for the people flowing free to the pool, and to yoga classes, and to codes, and all sorts of other places. It is in Medicare, or Medicare, too, and it's not Blue Cross Blue Shield, and other companies. Erica has just said that we are now designated for silver and fit, silver and fit. Unbelievable, Medicare pays for silver and fit, we've just got the designation, we need to get it out to the public, Medicare is going to reimburse three bucks a person.
Three dollars to the person.
It's unbelievable.
That's awesome.
We sent it online, so we're waiting for. Thirty-six dollars a month for a person.
Can we put that in the directors' file?
It's absolutely, we're going to, yeah, we'll have it for the regular meeting. What we're trying to do, we're waiting to hear, all of their stuff is online, so we have to go online and do all the sign-ups and everything, so we're waiting to get the full, the full amount of information back from them, so we can put it out correctly to the public.
Understood.
We need to get on every street corner with a.
Noah's excited, I don't know why.
That needs to be in the comments.
It's a fabulous program. A lot of seniors are on type 10s.
I think it's great.
Oh, it's, it's fantastic, this news.
We're, we're working on, we'll get that designation out to the next commissioners, right, to get all the, all the details.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to tell you, enter off the screen, you need to get.
Oh, it's such good news.
She reminds me of Mrs. Chatfield, the senior chancellor.
Yes, she does, wow, she does. All right, let's wrap this bad boy up so we can all go home. I, I need to appoint a subcommittee, because I already have Erica and Bill. So, I, I know I'm going to throw Steve under the bus, because he's volunteered. Do I have anybody else that would like to volunteer before I have to? All right. Steve and Alan, can you two be on the, here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to use Steve and Alan as the subcommittee to work with Erica and Bill on the resume review, and the initial inter, initial interview. And then I'd like to, if it's.
Setting the list for the, that, for set for the initial interview.
You actually perform the initial interview?
You have to perform it.
Yes, and we'll talk about that in a second. Can I put you guys on the search committee?
I've heard beyond that, but I think I'd like to have you guys to, like, working in the culture, with the jobs, with somebody on that, doing the interview as well. I'm happy to, to do the search, I'm happy to work with Steve, and getting the list set up, and who we think are the best, but I don't think I probably am acute enough to the work culture in this area to do a really good job.
Okay. Dave, would you be willing to help on the interviews then?
Yes.
Okay, so, Steve and Alan?
Yep.
For the resume review?
That's right, and we can set up what we think is a good shortest, who everybody's calling.
Right. And then Steve and Dave, for the initial interview, with senior staff, with Erica and Bill.
Can only be two commissioners?
We can't have three, otherwise it's a medium.
I promise subcommittee?
No, three is a quorum. Three's a quorum, we can't do that.
Okay, thanks very much.
If we don't, I know I've seen you before then, but have a very, very great time and safe trip.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. We are very jealous.
Thanks.
All right. We'll save.
And it's such a good thing for the pool, this silver and fit, it's very good, that's a lot like.
You're going to Australia, right?
Yeah.
I just bring us back to Vegemite.
You like Vegemite?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I was about to say, I'm looking, oh, yeah.
Ew, excellent, awful stuff.
All right, so.
People like it.
Yes.
I've had Haggis, it's pretty good.
Haggis is actually pretty good.
I agree.
That's good. So, we need, we need to finalize the process here, we need, we need to make a motion, and a, a vote, as a body that this is our way forward.
Okay, a little more discussion?
Yep.
At all? The job announcement that we're going to, is that part of the motion, does that need to be included in the motion tonight, to get that boosted?
No, because the job announcement and the posting, and we'll talk about this two separately, the job announcement and the posting, unless there is another volunteer, I will continue to work on those and send those to Carolyn, and once we have those ironed out, we'll get those to everybody for review prior to next Thursday's meeting, we'll add that to the agenda to vote on the final job announcement and PD. That way it's a vote by us, it's done in a public meeting, and we don't have a discussion and violate the Public Meetings Act.
The PD, PD is an acronym for?
Position description, I'm sorry. The PD, again, you don't have to excuse me when I say that, PD is position description, the draft of the description for the director's position. I'll, I'll use this and build on that.
And so the announcement will link to the pool?
The announcement will link to the pool, and on the pool website, yes sir, will have the job description in.
I'm going to.
Okay? Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
Awesome.
So the motion we want is a timeline, essentially?
Motion we want is a timeline, if we could.
Did we need to solidify who we were going to advertise with tonight?
We, we can do that on Thursday also.
If that was part of the package, where can we add?
Where do we add?
I'll have better information from AWC. AWC specifically states that ad placement is free of charge to Washington cities, towns, counties, and utility districts, period.
Ah.
Doesn't say anything about special park districts or, or special tax districts, so I need to find out a little more information.
Okay. All right, so right now we know we're, we're looking at somewhere between $500 to advertise, just using LinkedIn, WRPA, NRPA, and Unknown for Association of Washington Cities, WBY News Times. I'll call.
About Craigslist?
You know, we were, Carolyn suggested, strongly suggested not using Craigslist.
It's almost too clean for you.
And, is there anything out on the, there's really not a job board out on the base. And not appropriated funds, which is the MWR folks.
About WorkSource.
WorkSource might have a, a list of free.
I'd say WorkSource.
WorkSource, all right. Steve, can you look at WBY News Times and WorkSource, please?
WBY News Times, is WorkSource on the base site?
No, I thought, I thought Highway 20.
WA.Gob, and then Employment Hub, it's by, it's by Safeway.
All right. They also have decent deals again.
You have numbers in that?
No, and no.
Tell her about Safeway though.
Well, let me tell you here.
Like block.
It's, it's, you actually find a lot, because you're going south on 20, it's on the right-hand side.
You know where Churchill is, you got Blockbuster, and Churchill's right on the other side, right at the parking lot.
WBY News Times new office?
Okay.
It's about a half block, in one direction or the other.
I'll go and vote into both of those, my knees are clear, I'll just walk in.
All right.
We just want to know how much it costs, and all that stuff.
Just how much it costs, yeah, and what we can get.
Well, again, I, you know, just for the record, I think Carolyn was right in that we've gone through a lot, and this decision is going to be very important for this district, and it could mean the difference between success and failure. And I know the budget's tight, but there is money available, if we need to spend it. And that's what we have to say, is, it can't be that we're trying to nickel and dime this, we need to spend the money if we need to do it. And I, I can't, I'm not going to, I can't under or over emphasize that enough. Don't let $10,000 be, you know, the difference between success and failure. And if it helps us to be more objective in our selection process, I'd say it's very well, well worth it. I think we got a lot of people with emotional ties to things that may or may not, with all of us together, I think we can make a good decision, but it's going to be tough, and we are not professionals, by long shot, and, well, at least I'm not, I'm going to speak for myself, in human resource management, and the intricacies thereof, glad we have Carolyn to refer to, so, I do want to leave you with that. There's a lot on the line. So we're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion, either to go with the resource company, or, you know, we need to make a decision tonight, gentlemen, so.
How detailed do you want your motion? I could really create a subcommittee, review resumes, and conduct a group and screening that will be completed by February 14th, if that's what you want.
That'd be great, so I have a, I have a motion to create a subcommittee, and, which will review initial resumes and report to the committee by February 14th.
That's sort of right, that's shorter than mine, but yeah.
February the 20th, the report's commissioned by February 20th.
By February 20th?
Prior to the open, prior to the next meeting.
By February 20th.
February.
And that's all you want in the motion? Is that what you're, are you satisfied with that to get us started? We know that we want to try and get the ad ready for the, for the next meeting, for next week.
Yes, sir.
And we think to defeat this, and we can, we could try and figure out a motion the way you want.
Well, I have a motion for the subcommittee, and an interview period from January 17th to the 14th, oh, here it is. Move that we create a subcommittee to review resumes.
I don't think too.
And to conduct a preliminary screening, to review, the review to be completed by February 20th, prior to the public meeting. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, discussion.
Yeah, so we're, this is to create the committee, the subcommittee, it's going to review the resumes.
In the timeline.
Prior to, within this timeline that we've set up, and have the preliminary screening done by the 20th of February.
Or, have, have the review finished prior to, so that we can discuss it in the open public meeting.
Okay.
It's rushed a little bit, but it's the only thing I'm worried about, because I don't know what's going to be coming in in the way of applicants, but I think if we start it, we can always change it, obviously looks like it's a non-start.
And I would say this, there's nothing that's holding the subcommittee getting, getting together before that time period, as resumes come in, to review them as they come in.
See, then you're there.
Yeah, I, I mean, there, there's nothing that says you have to wait until the 14th to do your initial review.
Right. So, and we'll keep those resumes sealed until, or we just kind of have?
Those resumes will go to the subcommittee.
To the subcommittee, and they'll, they'll open them at that time.
That's correct.
Okay, they, they wouldn't be sealed, but they wouldn't be public, no?
No, you would unseal them.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that's important, too.
One of the two of us, shall be out. It looks like we're both here most of the times.
Yeah, I, I just.
Further public, further discussion by the board. All in favor?
I, I.
Motion carries unanimously, so we don't have to do a roll call vote. The subcommittee will be, as my last subcommittee appointed, has my current chairmanship, Erica, Bill, Alan, and Steve for the resume review. And then for the initial interview, we'll move to have Alan replaced by Dave Walton on the interview, subcommittee, with Erica and Bill.
Yeah.
Great.
I think that's best.
All right. Any other motions, comments, or?
What we have to do is decide how, where you narrow that down to.
Right. And we can do that at the next public meeting in February.
We may sit and have a happy discussion about what we want set up for it on, like in '12. Can we co-opt a call at times if it looks like, would we be, would we be permitted to co-opt a call to, if we had questions, it seemed to be over capacity in the office and so on. You know, so that it's not, we're not limited to secrecy of the board, but you would be involved in that as well.
Yes.
That's okay.
Okay.
That's understood.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Any further comments, questions from the board? Motions?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Ben, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you.
Something to do, yeah.
I will say this, I told people what you're saying, and I thought about it another over, and I was like, man, that sounds great, that sounds good. And the thing I kept coming back to is, it's going to be expensive. Because I know, I've seen the news by a couple districts.
Yeah.
And I know how much they, because Rain, that store used to actually, to hire.